At 5:30 PM.
You gotta, you gotta give warnings so that it can get recorded and we need some people to mute before we really get going here.
Uh, are we recording?
Yes, I'm starting the recording.
Cool, thank you Jessica.
This conference is no longer being recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
And if you're not speaking, if you could mute your microphone, we would appreciate that. Okay, so let's try this again. First, call the order. So we've called the order. I always do roll call because at the port we do, but, but we don't do, we don't do that. So we, we just did that. So moving on to additions on the agenda. On the lighting code Shayla, is that a first and second reading type of situation? Or can we, since we're just changing a chapter, can we, can we just make a motion and get that done?
You have to, you can do a first reading and send it to a second, or you can do a first and a second at the same meeting and pass it. It just depends on how it goes.
Okay, so I was just clarifying that. And then we have a double up on our resolutions. Both the outdoor lighting code and the state revenue are 2021-03. And to me, it seems like the state revenue would go before the budget. So we could move 2021-03 and change that to 2021-07 outdoor lighting code. It's, uh, it's nine E and F. The resolutions are under the same number, so we would have to change that before the meeting.
Actually, one is an ordinance and one is a resolution.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I noticed it and I was gonna let you, I was trying to text you to let you know.
That's okay. It doesn't matter. We, we figured it out. Okay, good. Uh, and then the ratifying of the collective bargaining agreement, we're gonna drop that off because we don't have the, we're not having that executive session today.
That's correct. Um, we are still getting on final stuff.
Okay, cool. So we're gonna be dropping, uh, we're gonna be dropping that off the old business nine C. Um, and then one other addition I wanted to put on there, especially before public comment, is we have to lift our emergency status before we can go back to regular meetings. So if we could add that to 10A, if I could get a few of you counselors, to give me a motion or support that, uh, because it is a, it is a pretty big addition. But it would help us moving on if we wanted to get back to regular meetings next month.
I, I would support that being on the agenda.
Lauren, you're, you're good. Uh, Gary, I didn't ask if Gary was here. Okay.
Yep, Gary's here, good.
Okay. Carol, and Carolina, you okay with that? Having that discussion? Okay, so that'll be 10A, lifting our state of emergency due to COVID-19. All right. So we have no presentations today. Moving on to consent calendar, we need to approve our minutes for May 20th, 2021.
I make a motion that we approve the council minutes from, um, May 20th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we got a first and a second. Uh, does anybody have any discussion on that? Everything look good? Uh, my review, I didn't see anything stick out. All right, hearing done, I'll call for the question. Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
And Caroline?
Caroline, yes.
Caroline, sorry, I won't do that again. Uh, okay. Now we're moving on to, especially in public meetings Caroline, I don't wanna spread it around. So now we are moving on to our state revenue sharing hearing for, for our budget. Uh, each year, the state distributes excess revenues collected for special taxes such as liquor and gasoline. In order to be eligible to receive these funds, a city must hold two public hearings. One before the budget committee and one before the city council to discuss possible and proposed uses, respectively, of the funds. Use of state revenue sharing funds in the past includes fleet, fire, and/or parts operations. The amount estimated incorporated and incorporated in 2021 budget is 11,340. Okay, so now we will open up this public hearing, uh, to receive testimony from the public regarding possible uses of state revenue sharing funds. So my first question will be, has staff received any correspondence or contact from the public regarding the use of state revenue sharing funds?
No.
Okay, so we don't have to read those into the record? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to testify before the committee at this time? Please state your name and address for the record. And please mute someone.
Take it off, take it off, uh, speaker.
Okay, I am not hearing anything from the public. Uh, so hearing no further requests to testify, I declare this public hearing closed. Well, this is going too fast. Well, unfortunately for the public, we're not gonna be able to do our executive session, which would probably take an hour. So we'll move on past, uh, item six. And now we'll move on to citizen concerns. And a reminder, this is for agenda items and we did add lifting the state of emergency to the agenda. Everything else is the same. And because of got to reading, you will have to speak up.
So now you're going to public comment, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, my name is Casey Folden. I live at, uh, 14 Hamlet in Port Orford. And I'm just hoping the city council is gonna pass the updated outdoor lighting ordinance. Um, a lot of work, a lot of research and thought has gone into it. I think it is, um, well done now and I'd like to see it passed.
All right, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak for a public comment? Citizens' concerns, sorry.
Yes, I would.
Go right ahead. Please state your name and address.
Michelle, good evening. My name is Brett Cecil. I reside at 42764 Port Orford Loop Road. I'm an active member of our local chapter of Indivis, North Curry County and Vice Chair of Curry County Democrats. I speak this evening in support of the dark skies ordinance. I believe that this ordinance will provide, provide, uh, security and safety on our streets as well as preserve the beauty of our night skies. I wish to thank Ann, the Planning Commission, City Council, and all Port Orfordians, who have given the time and attention to this ordinance. Again, I support this ordinance and I ask to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking up. Would anyone else like to speak under citizens' concerns?
This is Ann. I'd like to speak. Hello, every, hello everyone. This is Ann Belice, 608 Oregon Street. And I just have three brief things I'd like to say. First, I'd like to echo the previous speakers and urging you to pass the Port Orford, uh, updated lighting ordinance. As you know, this has been in the works for a long time. It's something that has broad community support and has a lot of, had had a lot of input along the way. And so we hope, um, that you can get it done soon and hopefully at this meeting. I also want to say about the planning, uh, items on the agenda, it was a little bit unclear what it's about. But, um, I was glad to see the looking forward, looking to the future Port Orford plan. And also our comprehensive plan are both great documents that, um, uh, you know, that people should become familiar with. There's a lot of great ones in there. And last but not least, um, I served recently, as you guys know, on the budget committee. And that gave me a window to really appreciate all the work that David Johnson has done for our community as our financial officer. And I believe this may be one of his last, uh, official meetings. And so I really just wanted to voice my appreciation as a citizen and probably on behalf of a lot of citizens, if, if they knew how much he did, would really be appreciating him. So I just, uh, wanted to bring that, that good appreciation to David at this meeting too. Thank you all for your public service.
Thank you for all your help too, Ann. All right, do we have any more citizens' concerns?
Hey, if I could, I, if I could, I would like to say something. This is Chris Hawthorne.
Sure, Chris.
I, I just wanted to speak out in support of the updated ordinance of, because I believe that the dark sky has been a really, had a positive effect on Port Orford for the local residents as well as for businesses that come and stay in Port Orford. Uh, people that stay here at our Redfish Loft love the fact that we have a dark sky ordinance. And I know for me personally, I really appreciate the way our town looks at night as a result of it. So I encourage, uh, the city council to, um, stay on this path and keep doing the good work that you're doing.
Thank you, Chris. All right, I saw Tom Calvin is with his hand up. Tom? You're muted, Tom.
How about now?
There you go.
All right, sorry, I have two muted buttons for some reason. Thanks for the time. I'll keep it short. And I would just speak, uh, in favor of the recommendation from the planning committee to appoint Bailey Rybald to the planning commission. Uh, I think she's a real asset to the community and it's great to see, uh, the next generation of leadership step up. So I think we should support that. I do support it and I encourage you to support it. Um, item, item nine E, the comprehensive plan for city of Port Orford future. I'll echo what Ann Belice said. I think you have some good documents in hand. I encourage everyone to go to the city planner's website and, uh, look, take a look at the looking to the future document. I know it only was focused on part of town, but it did a great job of capturing a lot of the issues that you're currently addressing, including the one that was just spoke on, the lighting ordinance and others. So, uh, I encourage everyone to go check that out. And in addition to the document itself, check out some of the attachments, in particular, the renderings that were done by Croplay Architects. They did a fantastic job, in my opinion, of capturing the flavor of the town and our community. And, uh, you know, I think it's just always nice to have a figure speaking a thousand words at you while you're thinking about these things. So I encourage you to do that. And finally, on that item nine E, uh, like a few others have already spoken on this, I won't repeat what's been said. But I, uh, encourage you to pass ordinance 2021-03 out of the outdoor lighting code. I too appreciate the, uh, the level of dark sky that we have at night when it's supposed to be dark. And I think we have, uh, lots of folks that also appreciate that. It's great to see the stars at night and it's great to know that we're not, um, interfering with the natural, uh, behaviors of some organisms and birds in particular that, uh, need that dark time to, uh, to have their normal life. Um, that's it. Thanks everyone for your time and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Tom. All right, do we have any more citizens' concerns before we move on?
Someone here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Could you please state your name and address?
Sure, I'm Steve Montana at, uh, 25 Hamlet Street.
All right, Steve.
We love Port Orford. You can't find a street anywhere in America like, like Hamlet Street. Uh, I don't think it's up the code. But anyway, um, I'm very much in favor of the, uh, updated outdoor lighting ordinance. And I, I really hope city council will vote to, uh, pass it. I know a lot of people have put work into this. Uh, you, you all have done a, a really stellar job, if I can use that adjective. And, um, I really do believe that Port Orford will shine brighter, uh, to tourists and, and the outside world. It will shine brighter if we reduce the light pollution. Uh, we'll set an example, just like the city of Philadelphia has done with their, uh, um, they're reducing lights. Uh, it's a big issue there and, and they've been very successful. Um, Philadelphia, it's been a, an issue to, uh, to help the bird population. It's been crashing into buildings. It's not our problem, but, um, light pollution is pollution like any other type of pollution. And I, I really thank you all for the work you've done and, um, I really hope this will go through. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on citizens' concerns? All right, thank you all for your input. Uh, we will move on to departmental reports. John, are you around? I can't see anyone.
Yeah, what happened to your, uh, camera?
I only got six people I can see.
Ah, okay.
And you're not one of them.
Well, I'm here. Um, so I'll just run down this real quick. Uh, the contact tank, um, update. It got in, uh, placed into service, were connected and, uh, did the final punch list, uh, I don't know, a week or two ago. Left to get corrected by the contractor and they'll be back, uh, sometime in June, if not early July to make that happen. Uh, we're, we're, we're struggling to, to get it in line with the other two tanks, but we're getting there. Um, another big issue we got at water plant right now is communications. We've had tag on site, uh, twice, uh, boosted our radio frequency, added batteries and backups to the, two repeaters. And then did a bunch of data logging, so I'm waiting for a, um, final outcome of how we're gonna resolve that. We're running in manual, um, partly in auto in the mornings when we're there and then manual in the evenings when we're not around the plant in case it kicks off. Cause it causes air and all kinds of problems, as you all know. Um, so that's ongoing. Um, Coast Guard Hill, we had a major blowout on a nipple there, um, middle of the month or so. And, uh, we're kinda evaluating that right now. I think we're gonna move that to the top of the priority list to get some.
Is that all on the dark sky?
Yes.
Sir, could you please?
I'm muted.
No, you're not muted.
Um, look at the screen. Uh, does, does yours say talk and the date and stuff?
Uh, so are you talking to people?
Bottom of the screen, it has mute on one side and menu on one side.
Excuse me, sir, can you hear me?
Okay, let me, let me see yours.
Can anyone see who's speaking?
It says caller two. It says caller two each time.
Okay, caller two, could you, oh, caller two left. That was a pretty harsh mute, but okay, moving on. Sorry about that, John.
Nope, not a problem. So, uh, back to Coast Guard, uh, pump station. Um, we've got, you know, uh, uh, a failed pump and some really bad piping. So, um, I'll be discussing that with administrator here later this week or early Monday. Um, we'll probably move that up on our priority list. It's in, uh, worse shape than we thought. Uh, we had a couple mains, we had six inch, uh, and I'll talk about this just for a minute. We had a six inch down on King Street that had a, a repair on it, or actually two pairs, and, um, it failed. So what I wanna say about that is the Band-Aids are starting to come off on all these repairs we've done. Titchener, we've added another, as you saw last month, uh, Titchener, we added another clamp on that one. I think there's eight or nine repairs on that line. So we kinda start needing to thinking about going through our distribution system and replacing some of this stuff with all these repairs on it. Cause we all know Band-Aids come off and when they do, they cause all kinds of problems. So, um, that's that, something to think about and we'll come up with a plan somehow, some way. Um, the only other exciting thing we had there was Gold Run subdivision. Uh, there's one house framed and moving pretty rapidly. Uh, there's three other lots that are sold. We did find all the water services, all the mains, the boxes, the meters, the whole nine yards there. So the, on the distribution side of Gold Run, looks like we're gonna be fine. We're not gonna have to put a lot of money in. In fact, I don't really think we need to do anything else or flush all the service lines and connections. We have flushed main lines, uh, through the stand pipes, uh, but we do need to go back and flush the service connection. So we'll fit that in at some point. Um, let's see, we'll jump into wastewater real quick. Um, so I've had lots of conversations with DEQ. We're having some issues with the meeting compliance of our NDPS permit. Uh, we're pretty sure it's a, a UV issue. Those parts, um, arrived, I think a week or so ago and we've started rebuilding those banks. So we should know tomorrow. We, we did one bank. We haven't had time to get to the other two banks yet because of all the other stuff that's going on. But we're diligently working with DEQ and in the process of trying to get that rebuilt so we can get our, our levels back into our permit. Um, so far DEQ's playing pretty nice, so we're working proactively to keep going on that. Um, what else? Subdivision, let's see, we did lose a blower at wastewater. We have two. One, um, is out of service right now, so we're working on a plan to get a second blower, get it sent out for rebuild. We're just waiting for quotes and parts and all that stuff to see if it can be rebuilt. Um, I'll keep you informed on that. It's kind of a major deal without a, without the blowers, you have no air, which means your bugs die and your plant goes south on you, which we had two weeks ago. So, um, Banden stepped in, helped us out. We got it alive again and we're moving forward. Uh, Gold Run subdivision on the wastewater side, we've got the electrical, uh, breaker and meter box all replaced by Reese. They showed up. Uh, got the breakers in it. Uh, we're waiting for a few more parts, like a generator connection and I think a relay. And then we will, um, CCE will put power to it and light it up. In fact, they probably, probably did it today or tomorrow. Um, then we'll be able to test run that system and I, I think we got lucky. I think it's gonna work for the time being. I don't know how long it'll last, being the age of it, but it does seem like it's gonna function. So that's a good news. That probably saved us, I don't know, 50, 60 grand. Uh, move through streets. Um, getting a lot of grief on potholes. Uh, unfortunately, we just haven't had the people at the time to address it, but we're doing the best we can. Uh, we got a few the other day on Ocean View, that paving job, and David can chime in for a minute, was due, I think, by the end of June. And I think they've requested a, a delay to August 30th, if I'm correct. And David was gonna check in and find out whether the grant would allow that or not. So I don't know where we're at with that yet, but sometime between now and August, hopefully Ocean View will get paved.
Awesome.
So, duh, duh. The rest of this stuff, you guys have probably already looked at. Uh, the other thing I'll touch on is, um, let's see, ODOT. So had another conversation with this week. Uh, we've got a couple meters to move and maybe a hydrant. So we'll fit that in. We gotta have that done by October because the repave is moving forward. They're hoping to have it on the street to bid by October and our repair or our, our portion of it needs to be done prior to it bidding. So, uh, we're trying to fit that in, uh, with all the other stuff that's going on. It's kinda hard, uh, but we'll get it, uh, some way, somehow. Let's see. Wish I had some good news.
Um, it's not happening in your line of work, John.
Uh, yeah, no, that's not fair. Well, the good news was it was sunny out today. Okay, how's that?
That sounds good.
Bear with us. We're doing the best we can. We're still actively searching diligently for a wastewater or two operator. And, uh, I don't know, we haven't found one yet. So that's kind of the big holdup right now. Uh, but if you have any complaints or needs or wants, give me a call and we'll see what we can do. We've got, uh, we've got one service done today. We've got four pending and Patty assures me there's more to go. So the town's growing.
All right, thank you, John.
Yeah.
We, we appreciate it. You've been shorthanded on both sides of the coin. So, and moving on to our next item under that thinking. I, I didn't do it earlier because we didn't do roll call, but I, I would like to introduce our new city administrator, Jessica Newberg, and give her a chance to introduce herself really quick.
Okay, hi everyone. Um, I don't know what, if you guys wanna know anything, you guys are more than welcome to kinda grill me, ask any questions. But, um, it started last week, so I'm, what, a week and a half, almost two weeks in. Um, I have a few goals of different things I wanna start and get going on. Um, I've been trying to work with John to try to get him some help because we all know he desperately needs some help the best that we can. Um, Dave has been amazing in helping and getting everything, um, organized and so that's been a great, thank you, David. And we'll be sad when he decides to jet off, but we know retirement is what you've worked for your whole life. That'll be amazing for him. Um, otherwise, that's about it. If anyone has any questions, I am gladly to take them if you guys wanna know anything.
Well, Jessica, we look forward to, uh, you serving the community and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that, I was muted. Uh, thank you, Jessica. Uh, does anyone else have any questions? I asked that already, but I was, I was muted, so, um. Well, no, no questions, but, uh, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure we'll all be talking to her as things start to open up, which we are working towards. All right, so administration report. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be a little bit pushy on the meeting because, uh, because Shayla has to take off because of, uh, conflict. And I'd like to get to these, that first resolution before, uh, that has to happen. But I think we'll be okay. Uh, any questions on the finance? Um, we just had our budget. We just did our budget. So that put it in pretty good perspective for us. Anything stick out for anyone? This is our last chance to grill Dave a little bit, you guys. We've been pretty nice to him. All right, Dave, I guess you're off the hook. Way too easy over last year, but that's all right. Uh, then planning. Do we have a planning report? We know they've been very busy. Pamela, is there anything we need to know?
Sorry about that. Um, no, I think we're just, uh, delighted to be working with you. Um, the workshop that we had, uh, last month was very beneficial for all of us. And, um, so we'll just keep doing this and, and making progress slowly but surely.
Awesome, awesome. As soon as you ever need anything, just let us know and we'll hammer it out.
Will do. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, now we move on to our liaison reports. James, do you have anything on fire district tonight?
No.
Greg?
No, I wasn't able to meet the meeting that when the watering was broken into that night, I didn't get to meet that.
Oh, 10-4. Gotcha. Okay, Tim is gone today. Carolyn, do you have anything on watershed for us? Muted. You're muted.
They did do a lot of, uh, mowing and cutting up the, around the watershed. And they're working on the Joanne Rudolph. But nothing really. Very short meeting last night.
Gotcha. Hey, Lauren, we're getting quite a bit of background noise from you. You might not be able to hear it with your headphones.
Yeah, uh, I'm sorry, I, I, my, my grandkids are here, so that's why I'm not able to hear that.
I understand. We're just hearing it too. It's not a problem. I was just letting you know. All right, sorry to interrupt. Carolyn, you got anything else from watershed?
Nope.
Okay, uh, Gary, do you have anything on health for us?
Nothing on health.
All righty, so that would move on to port, which is me. Um, the port is, they've had a pretty exciting month. We're getting really close on our ass to the EDA and that's gonna be the first phase of our seafood hub redevelopment and kinda get everything snowballing. So we are literally probably within a month of dropping that request. Uh, we got a new ice machine, which is a big bonus for us. We're, uh, we got that. And Halibut is ready to kick off on the 21st next week. So hopefully that'll be a lot better than crab season was. And, uh, that's the short of it. Uh, parks, Greg, do you have anything for us?
So last parks meeting, we appointed Sharon Fraser as a new representative for parks and, uh, that went over well. Um, thank you for the last meeting, um, and she's at the first meeting that time. Um, we, as the parks commissioner, we set all of, uh, just like. that time. We, as the parks commission, we set all of, just like we did here the last time, all the departments. So we can, you know, with the new group to see, you know, who wants to take one over. And then this next meeting, we plan on bringing the plan for the disc golf course to the parks commission and then hopefully bringing that to the city council for public comment on next meet.
Awesome. Thank you, Greg. Gary, emergency management, are we still kind of in a holding pattern on that?
Yeah, we need those numbers before we can really go anywhere on the grams.
Doesn't mean we're not moving forward on it. We're just, no new information at this point. Lauren, I think school is out, isn't it?
School's out and the first meeting that I'll be attending will be next Monday, the 21st. So that's, that's our day first.
Okay. So there we go with the liaison reports. Moving on to old business, we have 9A ODOT request for night work on Highway 101. And is it Lori that is here from the ODOT?
It's Heather from ODOT.
Heather, I was really close. Sorry, Heather.
No, that's okay. So do you want me to give me a little bit of background or I don't?
Yeah, I mean, if you can, if you can run down the request, it's pretty, pretty cut and dry there. So night work, yeah, just the hours, I guess, and what you're going to do and what kind of land closures we're dealing with.
Right. So we're looking at, in our specs, we'll specify in the contract that the work can take place 7:00 PM Sunday through 2:00 or sorry, 3:00 PM Friday. So that would allow the contractor work both daytime and nighttime between those days and hours. And we kind of expect normally people like to work during the day as much as they can. But our biggest thought is potentially the paving will be most efficient at nighttime, not having to deal with as many vehicles and folks going in and out of driveways. That's kind of the gist of it. I don't know if you have any questions on that. I guess the other thing is that side streets during some of this work will need to be closed to through traffic, but access to businesses will be maintained.
Okay. I just, so just to clarify, Sunday to Friday, so one week window, give or take?
Yeah, so 7:00 PM Sunday night through 3:00 PM Friday afternoon. So Friday through Sunday, so Friday 3:00 PM to Sunday 7:00 PM will be unrestricted and open flow, traffic, no closures.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Heather? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
Doesn't, doesn't sound like there's any real questions, but I have kind of.
Go ahead.
A detour or are you planning on just lowering the amount of signage or are you going to handle the traffic during the day?
Yeah, so it'd be single lane closures during those hours at all times. So if they're paving, they'll have a single enclosure with flaggers present to get folks through from one end of Port Orford to the other and then on the side streets, of course. And then with the assumption, you know, locals probably will use those back routes that you guys know about.
Yeah. Okay. Awesome.
Yep. And then as they do sidewalk, of course, there'll be pedestrian detours on walking routes.
I'll make a motion to approve the ODOT request for the night work on Highway 101 repaving.
I will second that.
Okay, we have first and a second. I don't know if we need much discussion, but I will ask. Does somebody have any questions for her though? I think I will go ahead and then call for the question. James?
James, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Okay. Well, there you go, Heather.
Thank you guys.
Too long for that answer. Thank you. We look, yeah, we're, we look forward to getting the new paving. Okay. So moving on to 9B, we have the appointment of Bailey Reinhold to planning commission. I trust you all had a chance to look at the application.
Yeah, I'd like to mention again that we should review our review process for appointments and whatnot. I have no objection to this appointment, but I still think we need to review the process. So we'll probably keep saying that to the end of time.
Okay. Okay. James, just because Jessica's new, could you share her an email with your feeling, your thoughts on that? And then we'll go from there.
I can do that.
Thank you. I'm trying to overload her as much as possible. Trial by fire.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that being said, any more discussion on the appointment of Bailey?
I'd like to make an emotion to approve Bailey Reinhold to report for planning.
I will second that motion.
Okay, first and a second. I'll call for the question. Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
And James?
James, yes.
Okay. And we're going to go skip by 9C. And then we go to 9D and, and you're not, just to touch on this, we had a late email about our existing comprehensive plan for the city of Port Orford future. Have all of you commissioners, I, I'm pretty sure you haven't had a chance to give that the, the attention that it deserves because I haven't, maybe you have, but it's the first thing that we all need to look over before we have this conversation. It was made by, not that we're not all local, but this group of people that crafted this document were very, very familiar with Port Orford and their intention was to retain our appeal. So I, because we don't, I don't necessarily want to do anything differently than they do without giving them the due diligence of studying it, we might want to table it. But before we do that, does anyone have any questions or am I missing the point on 9D?
Yeah, I believe I would say.
Go ahead and table it. Sorry, Gary.
No worries.
Is that a motion or just a statement?
Oh, we table the comprehensive plan. And now, were we going to approve that or do you, Pat, do you know what we were, what is on the agenda for?
Disgustingly enough, no. I know Jen had was going to have a comment during citizens concerns, but I really feel like to give it the respect it deserves, we should circle back and hit it again next month. We can put it on future agenda items right now. Obviously it's, it's not critical, but it is really critical because I feel like we're kind of behind on all of our housing issues and how we're moving with Port Orford. So it'll definitely go back on the agenda. And I think we're going to have a presentation about accessory dwelling units. I don't know where everybody stands on that, but we have a pro in town that's willing to come and do a presentation that has done it in other places. So that would tie in well with that. If you guys want to table it till the next meeting. Oh, and you already motioned. Did we get a second on Gary's motion? Okay. All right. Well, I don't think we need to, Lauren, go ahead.
I, I just want to say it is a good document. It was well thought out of and there's some sections on there that we all need to read and comprehend, especially future trends. And it's interesting, that document was done a few years ago and we're there now. What they said were future trends, we're, we're really there now. And so we really need to look at the future trend part of this program. So I think it's, it's a good idea to table it, to let everybody read the full document.
Okay. And we did get a second. Did you second that, Lauren?
Yes. Yeah, yes. I'll second that.
I just, I lost track. So I'm going to go ahead and call for the question. James?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes, Gary, yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you. So we'll get right back on that for next month and we will move on to ordinance 2021-03 outdoor lighting code.
Well, I'll move to that the Port Orford, Port, Port Orford City Council replace current chapter 15.17 dark sky ordinance with the new chapter 15.17 outdoor lighting code.
Mayor, if I may, set out the correct format in which to do this?
Please do.
Okay. I'm going to read this by title, okay? Does, does any counselor wish to have this read in full? No? Okay. Was this ordinance available to the council and the public seven days before this meeting?
I don't, yes. Do we send it out Thursday night?
It was sent out Thursday afternoon, if I remember correctly.
Okay, so yes, we, we get that.
So I'm going to, I'm going to read it by title only then, and somebody will need to make a motion to pass it to a second reading. And then I'll read it by title only again and then the motion will be to approve, okay?
Okay. Hold on, hold on. I just checked my email and it shows that I got it Friday afternoon.
When was it posted on the door? Thursday afternoon?
Do you remember when we posted it on the door? I'm going to say it was, I'd have to look, David. It was when you came in that afternoon. So I don't remember. I don't have my calendar in front of me.
I want to say it was Thursday.
It was Friday afternoon when it was posted.
Okay. So that shoots that down then.
So the way your charter is written then, it's read by, your charter is a bit cumbersome in regards to this. So it, it needs to be in two readings then.
Two separate readings?
Unless we read it in total.
There, there is no harm in it being approved at this meeting and then approved at the next meeting in order to get this through. Certainly better than sitting here and reading the entire document verbally.
Right. So what would happen is you would have your first reading tonight, you'd pass it for a second reading at your next meeting and approve it at your next meeting. That's the way the vote went.
Okay. Well, you know, and I think that's the most important part of this is if, you know, we don't want to do the first reading, then we won't need it. So do we need a motion for the first reading, Shayla, or to adopt the ordinance? We're already good.
I'm just going to read it. It's ordinance number 2021-03, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Port Orford, replacing ordinance 2010-01 dark sky with ordinance 2021-03 outdoor lighting code. And so you would make a motion to pass it to a second reading at your next meeting. So you make that motion now and then you have your second reading at the next meeting.
I would like to propose that, right now?
Actually, before we proceed with that, I had a couple of notes on this. I noticed that 15.17.070 is still lacking a time back on for signs. It has the time that the signs have to go off, but it doesn't have a time stipulation for when they can be turned back on. And of course, that's super important. So I feel like that needs to be fixed for, but I feel like that's an extremely minor edit. And then I have one more as well. But do you want to take a look at that? It's 15.17.070, section E is an echo. And it dictates the time that the signs must go off as 8:00 PM. My suggestion would simply be that signs may be turned back on, say, one hour before sunrise or specify like, say, 5:00 AM.
Whichever, you think that you'd want it to be a certain number since daylight changes? And is the assumption that they mean turn it off at 8:00 PM and then when it's light again, turn it, you can turn it back on, but that, that is an assumption.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's an assumption that allows people to work around this by having the sign go off for an hour and then come back on. I just feel like it needs to be clear and it's such a small edit to make it clear.
Can we do edits right now, Shayla?
Yeah, so this is not substantial. You could do some edits.
So we could say it turned off between the hours of
8:00 PM and, and 5:00 AM?
That seems reasonable. I mean, I know it's geared more towards 8:00 PM to probably 2:00 in the morning, but yeah, I mean, it seems like 5:00 is pretty reasonable. That's your guys' call.
I'd say 6. I'm just thinking in the winter, if somebody could turn their lights on at 5:00 and be bothering somebody sleeping still.
Keep in mind, we're talking about commercial signs that have lighting capability only. So we're talking about like the, the credit union bulletin sign, you know, and, and stuff like that. We're not talking about lighting or we're talking about signs only. So.
I'm just thinking if somebody's sleeping and they're, whether they'd be bothered by if it's dark, having a sign come on at 5:00 in the winter. So I'd recommend 6, but I'd go along with 5:00 if that's what the consensus is.
Carolyn, 6 or 5?
Lauren, you.
I would say at least probably 6.
Lauren, you got a feel on that?
I'd say 5 because we, when it gets dark here, it gets dark and stays dark. So.
Okay. Okay. So we got some contention here. Greg, what are you looking at?
Actually, my parents idea is 6:00 AM.
Okay. So who am I missing? Carolyn, Lauren, Gary? No, I covered everyone. So now it's on your guys' shoulders. I just need a motion from someone to make the change.
I, I couldn't hear what Greg said. What was his opinion?
Just 6:00 AM, 8 to 6 would be fun. Just because in the winter time, it gets sort of crazy. You know what I mean? So 5:00 AM, people are still, you know.
Okay. Well, then, then I will move that we amend section 15.17.070 subsection E from simply stating 8:00 PM to state that the sign will be off from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
I'll second that.
Okay, first and a second. I don't see a lot of need for conversation. Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Okay. Is, what was the other change you were talking about, James?
Okay, the other one is section 15.17.130 subsection um, subsection heading unlawful acts. Um, I would suggest that we remove the word "remove", um, as that would prevent people from making the change required to come into compliance once they have identified something that's out of compliance. Obviously, if they want to take down the light that is causing the problem, we want them to legally be able to do so. But yeah. Um, so, uh, I, I think that one's pretty straightforward. I'm pretty sure everyone's gonna agree on that, so I'll go ahead and word that as a motion then. Uh, I move that we modify subheading unlawful acts, and we remove the word "remove".
I'll second that.
Okay. Give you a chance to look at that. Uh, anybody have any discussion on that, or has everyone found what he's speaking of? Okay, I'm gonna call for the question then. Uh, the, the motion was to 1517130 under unlawful acts, so I'll call for the question. James?
James, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
And Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Okay, so Shayla, uh, does anyone have any more changes than they caught? All right, well, thank you for your due diligence on that, James. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're probably gonna hate me. I just realized that, uh, it also says demolish, um, which, which obviously, that's like remove. We want them to be able to demolish it if they, you know, to come into compliance, so shall we remove that one as well?
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to have it, so.
Uh, okay, here I go again. Uh, I move that we modify Section 15.17.130 subsection unlawful acts, uh, and we remove the section about demolishing.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll, I'll call for the question then. Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Lauren? Greg? Lauren, yes. You put a thumb up.
Greg, yes.
Greg, yes. Okay, thanks, Lauren. It's better when you say it. Uh, Gary?
Gary, yes.
And James?
James, yes.
I got everybody, yeah? Okay, I think, yeah. Okay, so anything else from anyone?
So this will be on your agenda on your next meeting as a second reading?
Okay, yes. Once again, thank you, James, for catching those things. We definitely wanna do this stuff right the first time.
Okay, do, do we need to now have a motion to pass it to the second reading?
With changes. With changes, or? Yeah.
You wanna do that, James?
Um, I could certainly do that. Um, uh, I move that we pass ordinance 2021-03 Outdoor Lighting Code to a second reading.
With changes.
With changes.
No, I'll second that.
Okay, we talked about this quite a bit. Uh, we have a motion to move it on to the second reading. Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Lauren?
Yes, Lauren, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
Okay. Good deal. So we have that on the agenda for next month. We have made our corrections. And, uh, great, moving on from there. So, little, little slowdown, but we are definitely moving forward, and it's just, uh, just some legwork now, it sounds like. Moving on to 9F, Resolution 2021-03, receive the state revenue, which we had the hearing for earlier.
We need a motion here?
Yes, motion to approve Resolution 21, uh, 2021-03.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2021-03, receive state revenue.
I'll second.
Okay, first and the second. Uh, and that was for fire, police, and/or parks. So is there any discussion on that? Okay, pretty standard budget procedure, so I'll call for the question. James?
James, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Okay. Moving on to 9G, Resolution 2021-04, adopting the 2122 budget. This is the most important motion we make all year. Don't be nervous, though.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2021-04, adopting the 2021 to 2022 budget.
I'll second that.
Okay, we had our committee meeting. It was adopted there smoothly in one meeting. Is there any discussion on the budget? Dave, you got it so easy. I'll call for the question. Gary?
Gary, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
And Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Okay. Well, moving on to 9H, Resolution 2021-05, adopting employee wages.
I'll make a mo- motion to approve Resolution 2021-05, adopting the employee wages.
I will second that motion.
Okay, first and the second. Any discussion on the wage resolution?
Yeah. Can we, can we actually pass that? Um, because I thought we were still waiting on negotiations and stuff to conclude, and there was supposed to be an executive meeting about that that didn't occur.
Uh, they've budgeted for worst-case scenario, and so we're covered. Uh, we don't have, I mean, we'll just have a little extra, or it'll go either way, you know, and we'll even if it was over, we have 10%, so, so we're fine. I understand what you're saying, but.
Okay, okay, yeah, just making sure that we weren't, you know, putting the cart ahead of the horse here, so, okay.
Understood.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we, we were hoping it would be done by now, but so Dave had to just do the best he could with the situation, but we're not gonna be out of compliance with anything, so.
Okay, great.
Okay, so we got a first and a second. Uh, any other questions on that before I call for the question? Okay then, Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
And Greg?
Greg, yes.
Okay. One more, Dave, and then you just, you got it. So, uh, it'll be 9I, Resolution 2021-06, fiscal year 21 budget adjustment.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-06, FY-21 budget adjustment.
I will second that.
Okay, first and the second. Is there any discussion on that? Dave did a very good job of explaining it. Okay, I'll call for the motion then. Vote, okay, sorry, I forgot. Carolyn did that. I'm gonna call for the last one. Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
And Greg?
Greg, yes.
Sorry, I must be getting close to my meeting limit for the week. Alrighty then. So that brings us to new business, uh, which we added, and that would be 10A, lifting the state of emergency that we, that we put in place due to COVID. And from what I've discovered with special districts meeting laws, which I assume, oh, I'll, you know, work with the League of Oregon Cities, is that once we, once we undeclare the state of an emergency, if we do, there's not much work to go back to in-person meetings because there isn't very strict guidelines on meeting law. So, just wanted to throw that in there, and the discussion is yours, the motion is yours. Let's hear what you have to say.
Um, well, I'll go ahead and make a motion here. Um, I move that we, um, declare a cessation of state of emergency and return our city council meetings to a more standard in-person form as previous.
I'll second that.
And we can double up like that, Shayla. It's fine, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with this motion.
Okay, cool. First and seconded. Uh, any discussion before I call for the question?
Um, I'd like to, uh, make a comment that that, now are we including opening the visitor center and the community center and, um, everything that got closed down when we did the emergency?
Well, we're lifting the state of emergency, and I believe that would give the other organizations the opportunity to do what they like with it. I mean, as far as group to group. Am I wrong? Gary's not right.
Is that, is that right, Shayla? Would, would we be lifting all of the restrictions that we set forth?
Right, if, if you lift the restrictions, those individual groups have the ability to determine what it is they wish to do within the, the state's rules.
So parks would decide whether to open the visitor center and, um, and the community center would be on us, so that would just automatically be opening the community center?
Right, we would just follow the state guidelines. There wouldn't be an additional layer for the city of Port Orford.
Excellent.
Anyone else?
Um, sorry, I, I missed all of that cuz my internet dropped. Uh, could I get a quick summary of what I just missed?
Uh, Gary was asking if it would open up all the other groups and the community building and stuff, and we are undeclaring the, or assessing the emergency, so they will individually be able to do their meetings and how they want it. And by lifting the state of emergency, that will ta- open the community building and all the restrictions we had, and we'll, they'll just have to adhere by state guidelines.
Oh, okay. Um, my, uh, my only personal comment and request, which I already informed, uh, you of, is that I am asking that we have our next meeting as a digital meeting and then go back to in-person meetings. Um, if not, then that's fine, but I likely won't be able to attend, uh, the next meeting in person, so. Uh, however you guys wanna handle that, I'll leave that guy, that up to you.
Would it be possible? Would it be possible for members of the public to attend via Zoom even if the council was meeting in person?
It is technologically possible.
Yeah, we could do that very simply. It'd be the same thing, and we could have cameras, a camera in, in the audience in a sense at all the councillors.
Right, that's, that's what a lot of entities have gone back to doing, is the councils, the boards meet in person, but members of the public can Zoom in if they choose to.
This is some of the other cities too. Just so you guys know, I've been watching some of the other city councils, and they have been doing hybrids, where if some people cannot attend the meeting, they do a hybrid where some people, they can choose whether they're in Zoom and/or, um, in person. So if that's the meeting that you cannot attend, we can also do a hybrid if we wanted to for you, James.
That's cool. Then that would work with, that would work with the Zooming for the audience too, if James can't make it, or any other councillors can't make it for that reason. We have that as a backup. I like that. Instead of the call-in that we used to have when we were in person, at least we have a video too.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, it's kind of a nice option even without COVID because it enables more people to watch. I mean, we can still do it regardless, so we should definitely look into that, and not to sound rude to you, James, but I don't wanna hold up the whole in-person meeting for you, so we will definitely try to get that technology before the next meeting.
I think it's something we can work on as a council with Jessica being new and everything else. We can get it, we can get it to where it, it won't be that hard to do for this next meeting if we wanna do the hybrids he talks about. I would like to have public there also. Um, we have to see what you know, what Shayla, what that is.
Okay, you're responsible for that then, Greg.
I'll, I'll go with Jessica this week. I'll go with Jessica this weekend. I will, I'll try really to set it up.
All right, anyone discussing on that before we call for the question?
This is Brett Cecil. Can you take any comment from the public on that?
Uh, no, sir, I'm sorry. The comment was up at the start of the agenda.
All right.
You can, I mean, I, I know it really doesn't matter. Under considerations, you can speak, but the vote already will be done, so.
I just think that you guys are best to get the most people involved. I wouldn't be attending this meeting if it weren't for the fact that you have Zoom, or that you have a go-to meeting.
Thank you, sir. I'm not supposed to let you do that, but I appreciate your sentiment. And if we have no more discussion, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the question on lifting this, assessing the state of emergency and going back to in-person meetings. Uh, I'm going to say Lauren.
Lauren, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
And Greg?
Greg, yes.
Okay, moving on to considerations. Do we have any, uh, citizen considerations?
I'd just say one thing. This is Ann, Elisis. I just wanna thank you guys all for, uh, passing and doing the first reading of the, of the Dark Sky Ordinance. I just have to say, it's kind of amazing that there are still little errors in it, so thank you, Councillor Garrett, for finding them, and as an author, I can tell you that no matter how many times you read through it, there's always some little error, so thank you. I also wanted to just quickly clarify the two planning documents that are, it's kind of a little bit unclear. Um, there's one that is our comprehensive plan that is, has been done longer ago, and that went through a lot of public process also, and then there is the Looking to the Future Port Orford document that I think Jen Head submitted. That is for the 10MU zone, that has a lot of wonderful things in there uh, that are also potentially relevant to our whole community. But just wanna clarify, there are those two important documents that would be great for everybody to be familiar with cuz, uh, a lot has gone into them, a lot of thinking, uh, to help guide us. And I'll look forward to hearing what we think about it at the next meeting. Thank you so much.
Okay, so under that line of thinking, Jessica, everyone did get that from Jen Head as far as the Looking in the future, but if you have it electronically, could you send all of the councillors and me a copy of the comprehensive plan?
Right.
Well, you know, and then we can start looking at that, both of those things this month, and then next meeting, we'll just start taking the bites out of it. Obviously, we can't go over the whole thing at the same time, but we'll get familiar with it, and then you guys can start making motions accordingly about what we wanna dig into. Cuz it's the first step of, you know, figuring out how the city wants to move forward, so we gotta move on it. Um, any other citizen considerations? Okay, staff. Jessica, Dave, if you're still there?
Yeah, yeah, just to clarify for John. The paving of Ocean View has been delayed. Tidewater had a scheduling conflict. They asked for an extension, uh, thinking they'll be middle of July when they pave it. uh, thinking they'll be middle of July when they pave it. So it's still within our grant period. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Counselors?
Uh, I just wanted to make a comment on affordable housing, and I feel that it, we just keep saying that we, yeah, we gotta address affordable housing. But until we make a first step, even after we make a first step and actually have a plan, it's gonna be a couple of years before anything happens. And I just can't stoke the fire enough that we end up acting on this, because the problem is critical to all of our businesses and the people that live here. Uh, we need some good planning and to get some affordable housing in Port Orford, or it's gonna just really turn into a bigger mess than it is.
Okay, well, we are going through those plans, and we're gonna talk about accessory dwelling units next month. Can you, can you light the fire in any other ways?
Well, I, I feel that it'd be great if planning could be looking at what other communities are doing to, um, solve that problem, and, um, and to start coming up with some creative ideas of how we can, um, you know, in what areas we can be focusing on and to encouraging. We've got, we still have a few properties in town that are big enough to actually put 20 to 40 houses on, small houses. And if we could figure a way of doing that in a creative way and, um, and to get somebody interested in those projects, it would be huge for Port Orford.
Right. Okay, well, like I say, we're studying this information, so all it will take is a motion next meeting to start that process. Uh, I don't know if we could do that right now, Shayla, could we? Well, actually, I know, I still think we should look over the documents and then go from there and, and see, you know, what, I know you want to move, Gary, but I don't think a month is gonna kill us and us putting the time into studying these, I think it's gonna gain as much as anything for us.
Yep.
And, and Gary, in the document that the planning group put together on the future of Port Orford, it does talk about those things, and one of the things we're missing is if we need new businesses, we don't have places for people to live, so it supports what you're saying. And there are some new innovative building methods, uh, that drop the price of construction. I hate saying that because it also means that there's fewer people building the house. But for instance, there's one that's, it's concrete, and it builds it like in a 3D printer. And, uh, the houses are built for like a third of what a house its size would normally be built for, so. Uh, and, you know, they're caught, they're here, we just need to get to go ahead and start looking.
Right, and what we need to do is open the doors for people that want to do these options. You know what I mean? We can sit here all day and say, we want to do this, this, or this, but we are here to set the policy that, that opens the door for those people, so. Uh, we'll do it. My major concern in this meeting is
Um, you, you still have counselors that have.
Okay, go ahead then, James, I'm sure you got something.
Oh, I've got several, but I saw Carolyn raising her hand. I think.
What do you got, Carolyn?
I was just wondering. I was going through some things, and I saw where there's a plan to build apartments above Doggy Beach.
That's just the speculative drawing that's been floating around the internet.
Okay. And also, uh, I don't know if this can be done, but across from me, there's a lot of brush that the man has just let lay there. Summer's coming, it needs to be cleaned up.
That, that is happening.
In Arizona?
The what? It's on Arizona, yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's being taken care of. I'm working with them on it, so I can let you know of what's going on if you want me to. Not a problem, I can send you an email.
Please, because I live across the street from it, and it is a mess over there.
Okay, I can send you an email, um, offline, and we can talk about it.
And is there anything we can do to stop people from doing that?
Um, I mean...
Dumping on, dumping on the right away is illegal. I mean, uh, but I do know that CTR has, uh, uh, yearly pickups for yard waste and stuff like that, and they do it for free. Um, so people just need to make sure that they are on top of that so that their waste can be taken care of properly, uh, you know? Or there are tons of people who get hired in town to come clean that up for you that are just looking to make a few bucks, so it's just a matter of the person being willing to take care of it.
Right.
Shayla had to drop out.
So the 10th and Arizona property is, is bad, but there's also a really bad property in 10th and Washington, too. It's really super overgrown, it's really bad. We have like a list of like properties that are overgrown. We're going on Jackson and Knight, too.
Well, if you guys have anything, um, any complaints or anything with regards to properties, just shoot me a message and we can work on it and see what we can do, okay?
I just didn't know if we had a working document or anyone that we had properties that were, that were, you know...
No, I've been working on it individually, just on each individual basis.
That's something I can bring to your attention tomorrow.
Okay, so, uh, I got a, I got a list of things here. I'll try to make them all brief.
Can you do it in three minutes?
Can I do it in what?
Three minutes? Just to remind you that we have a three-minute limit?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I can definitely do that as long as there's no, no discussion required on each of them here, uh, which there shouldn't really need to be, so. Um, first of all, I'd like to say it's really awesome to have a city administrator that's on top of stuff, uh, not even two weeks on the job, and she's already cleaning up brush off of our roadways. That's awesome. Uh, so kudos there, you definitely got my vote already. Um, with regards to the, the agenda, um, I, I still think that we shouldn't have the executive session listed as number six. The way we used to do it was very effective with it simply being a separate meeting that we had scheduled at a separate time, um, and whatnot. I don't know why we started putting it into the agenda like this, and, and I really think that we shouldn't. It just creates confusion. Uh, it should be posted as a separate meeting because it is a separate meeting. Um, gas tax. I'd like to see us go ahead with that, of course. I, I know it kind of got temporarily tabled while we waited to have a city administrator. Now we have one, so maybe our awesome city administrator can do some research and get the information that we need so that we can start to push this forward. Uh, I can correspond with her, uh, you know, off the record, uh, via email with, with the types of things that are needed and whatnot, so I don't take up everybody's time. Um, uh, we have houses in Port Orford that need to be condemned. Um, still, and I know this was a contentious point, and it didn't go anywhere before, I'd like to see us discuss it again. Uh, we have houses that are overgrown, decrepit, and are now simply serving as, uh, unsanitary homeless shelters. It's not, not good. We need to condemn the properties and make them into something productive for Port Orford. Either sell them or turn them into parks, something. Um, and then, uh, last thing is, it seems like people have a serious confusion about growing and not growing, so I'm gonna say this again. If we don't grow, we're gonna die.
Right.
Um, and whatnot, and I know a lot of people with the recent passing of the height restriction and whatnot, that was their main goal, was to prevent growth. And, um, and they were trying to utilize it as a method of restricting water usage as well. I know we have a water problem, but if we grow, even though that's gonna make our water problem tight, then we'll be able to have more funding with which to put back into it. Uh, imagine if we got another half a million a year from taxes because the people's property values went up, even if our water consumption went up. We would then have the money to go about starting to repair things effectively. So ADUs, I encourage them, expansion, growth, as long as we have it planned and according to the vision for Port Orford. Sorry, I'm pretty sure I went over three minutes, but that's all.
Don't make me stop you talking, I hate that.
I tried.
I know, that's trying is the, the, the big thing. Lauren, what do you got?
I, I would like to add on to what James is saying, and I think he's even brought this up before. There's lots of construction going on, uh, and I want to say, uh, all over town, but specifically in areas where we can't see, and I, I'm not saying people build solid fences not to see it, but you can hear construction going on. And, but there's a lot of other construction going on, and there are no pink documents anywhere to be seen around the properties, all over the place.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and I'm not worried about using, losing revenue, which it, I, that is part of an issue. The part is safety. We don't know what the kind of electricity, electrician, we don't know the plumbing. Maybe we're losing water through people's houses. I don't know. But there, there needs to be some specific things. If there's construction going on, somebody needs to stick their nose in it and say, where's your permit?
Yep.
And, and start, and start doing that as well. And once again, the document that Ann has talked about before that we are going to all read, it fit, John, you're gonna like this a lot, John Isador. It talks about it back in 2006 that they knew they were losing water like crazy somewhere. Uh, maybe it's those wooden pipes what we still have in the ground, who knows? Uh, but, uh, we need to look at those things, and it talks about growth. We need a city center or a city area where there's, people can go and shop and do things to start building things up, but then it goes right to what Gary said. We don't have a place for people who can work in those facilities to live in town. So, uh, it, it's a full circle issue, and, and I'm glad we're all talking about this.
Yeah, I, it, it's our biggest issue is the building process and the housing around here, so that's, that's why we have our continuing action items all pretty much. We got vacation rentals, Board of Appeals, planning procedures, ADUs, and gas tax. Everything that we pretty much just talked about, so we'll just start hammering on that. We did take some time in figuring it out. Uh, anybody else? Greg or Gary? Carolyn? Okay, I got a big one then. Uh, Dave Johnson, he's been here for 17 years. This is his last meeting. Uh, he probably just popped a beer by now. I know I would have. Uh, can't thank him enough. We are gonna have him back to give him a proper send-off, but because of everything that's going on right now in the transition, we're, we're not quite there yet, but it's very important that we all give props to David during his last meeting, especially for the last, I don't know, it's probably six months at this point, of doubling down and as he was phasing out, having to work twice as hard, so I can't really put into words how much I think all of us appreciate it, Dave, and, uh, we will make sure and have you back and show how much we appreciate you.
Thank you, Dave, for everything. And, and don't forget, he, don't forget, he also served as Assistant Chief on the Fire Department for quite a long time, and so was invaluable to our community in a volunteer way as well, so.
Thank you, Dave. All right, I can't see him, but I hope he's still here.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah.
I think he's got a beer in both hands.
I know I would, and I don't even drink anymore.
Or any less.
Alrighty, uh, so Jessica, just to touch on this, uh, it's a huge elephant that we're eating. All we can do is one bite at a time. We've been excited to have an administrator to start lining stuff out, so like I say, we just eat it one bite at a time. It's an insurmountable amount of stuff we have to do, so we'll just do our best. And, uh, thank you, everyone, for your participation. Uh, we already said the continuing action items, future meetings, we have ADUs, we may touch on gas tax, depending on what we come up with, and we have the second reading of the dark sky ordinance so far. Uh, and as always, if a couple of you want something on the agenda, just let me know before the week of the next meeting, and, uh, we'll go from there. Thank you all for your time, meaning of journey.
Hey, hey, Tom, Tom, if you're still there? Tom Cavaneese?
Nope.
Uh, Tom, this is Lauren. I, I know, I, I know you're probably aware of it, there were two sea lions down on the beach, uh, just south of, uh, 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 Battle Rock. I don't know if you know about it yet, washed up?
Absolutely.
Okay. That, I just wanted to make sure. I, I thought you wanted to know that. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great day.
Jessica, great job today.